Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council for this Monday, October 21, 2019. It is after 7:30 PM. Mr. Paula, as Clerk of Council, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bastancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
We do have a quorum because everyone's here. And just to point out, Mr. Ansel will not be at the next meeting, so it'd probably be imperative that everyone try to make it if we have some sort of piece of legislation that needed to be passed on an emergency basis. One more is absent, we would not be able to do so. The agenda, and albeit a short one, although I know that through years that sometimes the agenda fills the time allotted, but the agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I would ask you to join the members of the City Council in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the October 17 or the October 7th meeting, Council meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Warden to approve the minutes of October 7, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The minutes of October 7, 2019 are approved. Welcome, Mr. Mayor. Glad you made it back. I heard you were on the road, or?
Yes, I made a few streaking marks on 514 coming back from Newark, Ohio. I just pulled in about five minutes ago, so, yeah. Welcome, Council. I'm sorry I missed the committee meeting. I would have liked to have been here with you, but I had this, it was Heritage Ohio Annual Conference down in Newark, and we're, I'm on the board of that group, as well as Sandra Hall from our community, so I felt I needed to be there. So I just want to bring you up to speed on a few things, very brief tonight, but I want to congratulate all who participated in the candidates tonight last Thursday. You know, I think that was a good forum to have people speak and be heard, and we appreciate the efforts of the League of Women Voters and NAACP and Worcester Daily Record and the AAUW for sponsoring that event. Want you to be aware that we, you know that Cody Post left the WorkHog for another dispatching center, an advancement for him, and we truly appreciate what Cody brought to our dispatch center. He's a real good guy and we wish him well. Barry, with our fire department, our fire chief, Barry Saley, has been running the cog, really for the last year, sort of overseeing it. We found that one of our firefighters was looking to retire, and so we had a conversation, and I'm happy to report that Rhodes Walter, who was one of our fire captains, has accepted the position of running the cog for us, our dispatch cog. So Rhodey will do a really nice job for us. We were really excited to have him onboard. He will be retiring from the City of Worcester Fire Department at the end of this year, and then he will be assuming full-time duties for the cog at that point. So he's working on sort of a transition temporary basis while he is still a fireman here at the city. The Wayne County Community Foundation Dinner was about a week or so ago. They recognized Mike and Stephanie Reardon as the Friends of Philanthropy and a well-deserved honor as far as I'm concerned. Mike and Steph have done so many great things for our community, so excellent organization. We're so thrilled that the Community Foundation is part of our city and part of Wayne County. And as I say, Heritage Ohio, I was there today, and I'll be there tomorrow and part of Wednesday. Sandra's there for the same amount of time. Joel is at ICMA International City Manager Association meeting down in Tennessee, so he will be back on Wednesday also. So we're busy trying to learn things and identify ways to move our city forward. With that, I'll turn it over to Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no petitions and no communications from the public. We did have a finance committee this evening, so Mr. Ansel, would you like to give a brief synopsis? We looked at a couple items.
Certainly. Yes, thank you all for attending tonight's Finance Committee session. The two topics for review included the bed attacks application review and discussion. For the first time in over 15 years, we have received more than one request. Traditionally, we had received one request that say combination of the Worcester Chamber of Commerce, the Wayne County Convention Bureau, and Main Street Worcester. And it's a formula index allocation. They do a very good job justifying their joint application. It's over 100 pages with facts and figures as it relates to the economic drivers that they're responsible for within our community, primarily related to tourism and people visiting our area and spending time in our restaurants, our hotels, and other related activities. This year, we have also received one request from the Wayne Agricultural Society, aka the Fair Board, for funding requests to help support the convention center pavilion that they've recently constructed and built on the fairgrounds. The topic was lively and productive. We will continue the review process on council. We will have a meeting in about four weeks to have additional discussion, but I will leave this request on three readings in my absence next week. Mr. Sanders will make the introduction in two weeks, the first reading, and then we'll go through the three-reading process, and the Finance Committee will reach a consensus recommendation for that piece of legislation of how we want to proceed with it. So that will be ongoing discussion and development. Yes, Councilman Silvestri.
I'm sorry, I may have missed it. Did you highlight who that additional applicant was? Or is that something?
Yes, the Wayne Agricultural Society, also known as the Wayne County Fair Board. And they have presented a very nice and detailed funding request, of which council will receive copies this week for further review and discussion, but thank you for your candor. The second topic was the General Worcester Statue Initiative. We created legislation that will have its first reading this evening to just kind of get this moving forward with some collective decision. We've had several presentations and meetings and discussions, so Mr. Myers was kind of nimble in terms of saying, hey, let's get something on the table so we can review, discuss, and vote on to decide how this project is going to proceed. Just for the community's interest, this is an $85,000 initiative, whereas a life-size bronze statue rendering of the late and great General Worcester would be placed in the library corner there in high visibility and as a tribute to the individual who our city is named after. And we've all heard the history. It's an interesting story, but it's something that is a bit unique just because it's somewhat unusual to have public funding, taxpayer dollar funding for these type of expenses. And I did share, just as a reference, that recently you saw the article in the Daily Record regarding the veteran tribute that Orville has placed in its City Hall. It's a beautiful bronze eagle with a colorful flag with a very nice tribute to all the deceased and alive past veterans from the Orville area that have served the company, the country. Many of them gave their lives, but many of them are still alive and beyond, so it was nice. And that was all privately funded. It wasn't near as costly as the General Worcester Initiative, but it's a smaller-scale project. So that's something we'll be seeing tonight on first reading, so this is a nice kind of intro, and we'll keep this for three readings also, just so we can have a, you know, thorough deliberation and understanding, and we'll probably bring it up as a final topic too for our next working Finance Committee session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ansel, for a nice summary. We do not have any unfinished legislation, so that brings us to new business. The first item is the first reading of Resolution Number 2019-52. It'll be presented by Ms. Warden, and it is slated for three readings. Mr. Paula, would you mind reading the title?
Resolution Number 2019-52. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with MLLM LTD for the purchase of land necessary for the construction of the East South Street Public Parking Lot, appropriating the necessary funds and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. The city is requesting council's authorization to enter into an agreement with MLLM LTD for the acquisition of two parcels located at 406 East South Street, which is behind Muddy's Downtown. Plans for the property include raising two existing cinder block structures this coming winter and then next spring replacing the unlit gravelled lot with downtown's sixth public parking lot, which will be open to all downtown visitors. This new lot is accessible from East South Street or via an alleyway between South and Liberty Streets, and it will feature an estimated 42 parking spaces, landscaped aisles, and lighting. Additionally, the site will host waste receptacles, expanding the city's downtown waste collection program. The project will pave the way for Liberty Street Partners to move forward with their plans to conduct, excuse me, construct a new two-story building with first-floor retail and second-floor residential on the lot directly east of Muddy's along Liberty Street. By adding capacity to further support downtown development, the project aligns with the vision of the city's 2015 downtown plan. On June 27 of this year, Sowers, Boy and Associates appraised the property at $185,000. The city plans to acquire the property at $50,000, accepting the site's remaining $135,000 in value as a charitable contribution from MLLM. An additional cost of $30,000 may be required, and so it's being requested by the city to cover potential closing and grant compliance costs. Any unused funds will be allocated to the parking lots construction next spring. Excluding approximately $5,000 in closing costs, acquisition and any compliance costs will be reimbursed by the city's Community Development Block Grant, or the CDBG, which is usually called. So in order to expedite demolition in advance of the oncoming cold weather, I move to place Resolution Number 2019-52 on its third and final reading tonight.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Warden to suspend the rules on Resolution Number 2019-52. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
All right, the rules are suspended. I look to you. Do you have another motion for us, Ms. Warden?
I do. I'd like to ask if anyone on council has any questions. Mr. Malley is here in the audience tonight, and he can help.
Do you have a motion for us?
Oh, sorry. I move to adopt Resolution 2019-52.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Now I look to you again, Ms. Warden.
Questions?
Yes. And Mr. Malley is here.
I have a question. The buildings that are to be raised, are they currently used? What are they being used currently for?
One of the facilities is in condemnable condition with a roof starting to cave in. The other facility used to serve as host for the Living Water Fellowship Church, which has since relocated to Bowman Street, just a little further north, and that facility is vacant today. That is a singular cinder block structure. Both of them are actually, the newer facility was built on a slab, so there's just a cinder block envelope with a restroom and facility office on the inside. The other facility, the one that's falling apart, was part of an auto dealership at one point, and so it had served as offices and storage, and there at one time had been storage for some maintenance there as well.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Mr. Silvestri, do you have a question?
Yes, I just want to make the comment. It's exciting to see this come forward. I know the city worked hard as we have made plans and continue to renovate our downtown space so as not to sacrifice or reduce our number of parking spaces, and this is near and dear to my heart because I have a number of constituents that express concern when shopping downtown or doing anything that requires parking downtown, that we are still short on spaces, and there's persistent frustration in that regard. So the addition of 42 parking spaces sounds fantastic to me, so I look forward to supporting it.
Yeah, and I would add that I'm just excited to see the downtown's progress moving toward the East Quadrant, which I feel has been in need of some TLC for the last several years, so I'm looking forward to that sort of kicking off with this parking lot project.
Seeing no further discussion, and thank you for the presentation, Mr. Malley, I would ask that you call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-52 passes. Turning to Resolution Number 2019-53. This is going to be presented by Mr. Ansel, and I note it is budgeted, so it will not require suspension of the rules, but it does require Mr. Paula to read the title, if she would, please.
Resolution Number 2019-53. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for fuel services for city vehicles.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is a repeat of what we initiated three years ago, a multi-year contract that will be open for bid. The last term that we commenced in 2016 only had one bidder, a local provider of fuel, but this is the fuel for all of our city fleet and vehicles. The three-year contract is an efficient way to handle the process because we don't have to reopen this every year, and it's an efficient way from a budgetary and cost center overview of handling the process. You can see the various cost centers in the description of requests. If you'd want any delineation, but it's the entire city fuel purchases, fire trucks, ambulances, utility vehicles, police is by far the largest consumer of fuel. So that being noted, I would hope that we can allow the process to commence, and let's put this behind us for another three years, and I'm sure that our local provider will be very competitive in their fuel sourcing to the City of Worcester, so. Yes, Mr. Bastancic?
Just a quick question. For this three-year contract, how does it take into account, say, if all of a sudden we get a jump, say, 50 cents in a gallon? What's the?
It's index pricing. Explain the index pricing model.
It's the OPIS method of determining the rate, so that is the Oil Price Information Service, and they base the outreach in the area for the Ickton Canton area, and typically in our contract and on our word on our contract, it's the rack, they call that the rack price, and then whatever cents they want to bid it, it's above the rack price. So you might see, and typically we save a couple cents a gallon off the bump, so it's advantageous for us to go this route.
Seeing no other questions, I will motion to adopt.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel is there, second?
Second.
Second by Myers. Any other discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Finally, Resolution Number 2019-54. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel, who has already announced he will keep it on three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I'll turn my eyes to Mr. Paula one last time and beg her to read the title, please.
Resolution Number 2019-54. A resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to donate funds to the General David Worcester Memorial Statue Project and appropriating the necessary funds.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, I covered this in significant detail in the Finance Committee recap, but I will just highlight that this is a very unusual request for a very unique and innovative project. I commend Jason, who has spearheaded this, and Jason Anderson, and he has a real passion and vision regarding this commemorative statue. However, there is some controversy associated with using taxpayer dollars for these type of initiatives and expenses, and again, we'll have further discussion on this topic, and we'll see how it proceeds as we make the final vote in about six weeks. I will highlight, though, just for the public reference, the bronze work, the six-foot-tall statue, has a cost of $62,000. Then there's going to be some plaques and other accessory items, and two smaller bronze representative castings of the larger figure, and that's about $5,000. Then landscaping and maintenance and upkeep is $9,000 apiece, so another $18,000, but the total budget projection is $85,000 for this unusual initiative. Thank you.
All right, we'll consider that resolution, I put my paper away, 2019-54 is having its first reading. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion, and we'll start out with Mr. Myers.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. Only thing I wanted to mention, and I've got to grab my notes, I just wanted to congratulate the Worcester Fire Department and specifically Rhodey Walter for his retirement and then taking the helm of the dispatch center for the city. That's exciting news, and glad to have a qualified and quality individual taking that role. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Silvestri.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Ms. Warden?
I have nothing to add, thanks.
Mr. Ansel?
I too would like to congratulate Rhodey and the city administration for identifying a long-term service provider for the City of Worcester and allowing the consideration and the final selection of that very dedicated, hard-working, bright individual, so we can establish some continuity and level of teamwork that's so vital in that high-stress and highly dynamic work environment, and Rhodey's an exceptional candidate. Congratulations, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Cavan?
Thank you. I too was excited to hear that Rhodey Walter was to be named head, as John had said, a quality individual. Very excited. I also wanted to thank Cody Post for all he's done to help us get our feet under us with unfortunate situation with Michael Banks when we first started WorkHog. He really stepped up. I don't know if we would have been where we are without him. He is going to continue on a part-time basis, is that true?
He is, sort of, almost a consulting-type of basis. Whenever we have issues that he's very skilled in, we can contact him, and he'll either come in personally or come in electronically and solve whatever issues we face.
Thank you. Again, very, very fortunate to have an individual like that step up and help us get started the way he did. And again, congratulations to Rhodey Walters. Thank you.
Mr. Bastancic, we'll give you the final word.
Nothing more.
All right, and I see Mr. Ansel moved to adjourn.
I'll swing to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. We're adjourned.